Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen, Combination Board of Selectmen, Fire Station Assessment Committee Meeting, January 25th, 2017 meeting. I would ask everybody to stand for applause a little bit, please.
.......................................... Okay, so...
The Selectmen have opened their meeting, I guess I would have the chairman of the Fire Station Assessment Committee open his meeting.
Okay. I'd like to open the meeting of the Fire Station Assessment along with the Selectmen's meeting, so we can talk about our next phase. They would like to communicate.
Great, I thank you all for coming tonight. Just as a background on what we're here to discuss, about a year ago, a little over a year ago, CPC provided about $15,000 to do a study of the fire station. And basically, it's a study to see architecturally and kind of spatially what's needed to provide for properly the fire station. That study's been complete, it's this document here. I do have a couple of...
Yeah, I think that's...
And it is now, it is now in our bank for use. This meeting now is to take that first phase and take it to the next step. And the chief is here to kind of talk through what he envisions as the next step in the process. So if you could?
Certainly. So you have before you, and you've, I know you've reviewed it previously, we've discussed it previously, the assessment done by Dor and Whittier. What I would propose to do as Phase Two, instead of hiring an outside firm to do the next step, which would be whittling that assessment down to meet the needs of the community and the department, having us do that internally, utilizing personnel from the Fire Department, other stakeholders, whether that involves school committee members, members of the Board of Selectmen, whatever entity, neighbors, abutters, whatever entities would be involved, incorporating them into the planning process, trying to come up with a revised assessment that better reflects our actual needs and expectations.
Chief, could you talk a little bit about that? Because the Dor and Whittier proposal really just looks at spatial needs, but it looks more generically?
What we received from them was very much a generic report. It listed out a lot of spaces for the building that we would not have any use for, a lot of extra space that we don't need, a lot of housing for personnel that we don't have and would not foreseeably have in the near future. Obviously, we're looking for a building that would sustain the department and the community for at least the next 50 to 75 years, and we need to plan accordingly. Most of the space is taken up by the apparatus for, and the apparatus housing. So that would be the focus of our attention, in addition to whittling down the office and personnel space from what they had submitted. What they had submitted was actually, appeared to be, cut and paste from another community which is substantially larger than Nahant.
And what do you envision as coming from the next phase?
Coming from the next phase, what I hope to have in place is a recommendation from the committee for a revised assessment. I had submitted a request for a modest sum in the next fiscal year for Phase Two, just for a professional such as Dor and Whittier who can take all of the information and put it in a format that could then be moved on to the next phase. We can provide all of the grunt work in doing so, but the finesse of putting it into that format, I think, would require an outside expert.
But in the first portion of the Phase Two...
First portion of Phase Two, the vast majority of the work would all be done in-house. Fire Department personnel, myself, abutters, open space and recreation, school committee, all the people who are, are or could be potentially impacted by whatever is done. What we've already done and what we would continue to do is also look at other departments and other communities who have gone through this process, and try and model some of what we do after what they've done. Previously, we went to new headquarters in North Andover, which is a much larger community. And their headquarters building, again, was built on school property. It was a new structure, has nine dorm rooms, individual dorm rooms, which far exceeds what we need. Much more meeting space, office space, and everything else, and that came in at under $6 million, including the design phase. So what we're hoping is that we can take lessons learned from places like North Andover, other communities that have recently gone through the process or are currently proceeding through the process, and incorporate that into a plan for Nahant.
You sent out a letter about a year ago...
Yes.
Almost a year ago, stating that you wanted to meet with the school committee and meet with other departments.
Yes.
Has any of that happened?
No, because we have not received the authorization to move on to that step. I had come to the board seeking acceptance of the reports and authorization for the committee to move on to the next phase. That would be part of Phase Two.
And also, as part of Phase Two discussion, the assessment that was provided by Dor and Whittier looked at other sites, just to do an assessment of what viable options we have if we were to move this facility. And that would be part of the review that would come back before the Selectmen, just to talk through all options. And if it ends up staying at this location or being at another location, that would be a discussion and a preference that would come from future conversations.
Well, again, you're looking for more money. We spent $15,000 for them to cut and paste. They never did elevations of the original fire station. Did they know what the, I mean, let me ask you this. If, just say, if we add it to the building that we have, is that, is that, any of that in here? What the cost would be to add two bays?
Well, what this study will do, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, what this study was intended to do was to show that you should have areas such as this with sizes such as this and purposes such as this. And so what the chief would do is then scale those accordingly. That would then tell us, can we fit into the existing building? Or through an addition, can we reasonably be accommodated there? And the initial study was funded for the pure purpose of seeing how could we appropriately accommodate the Fire Department for the town of Nahant. And so with this information, that'll be one of the first assessments. Can it fit in here?
And the problem with doing that, and that's been discussed extensively and was discussed with Dor and Whittier, is that in order to do that type of addition or renovation, you need to bring the entire structure up to current code. Fire code, ADA code, all the applicable codes. And their recommendation for doing so is it would cost more to do that to the existing structure, and you're better off tearing it down and starting from scratch.
Well, some people would disagree. If you're adding bays, I mean, essentially, you need to, I know that, I know that the, one of the firemen is looking for another grant for another engine, and you want to be able to fit that in there, because of the length, the height, the width. I understand all that. You're talking about a cement block building. I mean, is it, the building right now is worth $155,000, the structure. So my question would be, what's the percentage where you have to comply with all that? What percentage do you have, which percentage has to be spent to comply with those rules? Is it 30%, 50%?
And a lot of that goes by the building code. There's three levels of alterations to a structure by the building code. I'm not a building official, so I'm not completely fluent in all that, but you're absolutely correct. It is a percentage. It is somewhere between 33 and 50% of total square footage.
Okay, so it's, no, it's cost. It's 50% regular home, I don't know what it is for commercial, municipal buildings, but it's 50% for a home, a regular home. You know, if I was to tear my house down, and my house is worth $100,000 bucks, if I spent over 50% on that structure, then I'd have to comply with FEMA and the state building codes.
But this doesn't fall under the residential building code. This is the international existing building code.
That's right. So my, I guess my question is, what's it cost to put up in the back? And I understand it's in an A-zone, and I'm familiar with that, and I understand that, you know, you can build in an A-zone. You can, as long as you have flow-through, you know. What's it going to cost for something like that?
And that's...
Only because I don't want to spend any more money on consultants to come in and tell us when they didn't shoot elevations, when they didn't, they didn't do any of that work. All they did was cut and paste and showed us a bunch of buildings in constituents, 17,000 square foot.
And I agree with you, and I'm not looking for a consultant to come in and do that. I'm looking for us to do the work, and just a consultant to put all the work into a package.
Well, and I also think that what you're identifying are aspects of what this first phase would look at. Because those are very valid questions as to, you know, what are our options? And what codes are triggered if we cross certain thresholds?
Yeah, I think the school committee should have been notified about this meeting, and I think they should have been here. I mean, I think, and I don't think we need to accept Phase One to talk to the school committee about taking a portion of their land. Okay? If you want to do, if the town wants to go that way, and I just don't think it's right. I think they should have been here, they should have been invited to the meeting, and I'm willing to accept the assessment. I mean, you guys, listen, I mean, you worked hard, you did a lot of work on it. And, you know, you're all volunteers, I understand that, but to move on to this next phase, $6 million, 17,000 square foot buildings, you know, and looking at, I think we need to maybe step back and we can accept it. And it looks good, but again, I think we need to, I just think we need to step back a little bit on this.
And if I may, honestly, that's all we're asking for. We're asking you to accept it and to authorize us to move to the next phase, which would incorporate looking at all those different options. Whether it's the different sites that are proposed, or staying on the existing site, whether it's adding on additions and what that entails as far as code requirements, or building new. But we need the authorization from the board as a committee in order to move on to the next phase.
T, did you want to say something?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
It's, from this Selectman, I'm 110% opposed to any public safety building. This town is 3,500 people, it will never happen as long as I'm here. I'm here for two and a half more years at least. So we have to come up with something that is going to get by the Board of Selectmen.
I agree.
And I'll twist his arm to make him vote no. But we can't do that. The whole neighborhood is up in arms. As soon as they hear fire station, they talk about this to me. And it hasn't even happened yet, but they've heard this. You know, and if we're talking about a change here, I would like money applied to it, if you guys can. Gee, we'd like to do this. We think it will cost this, but we really need someone to come in and tell us, but it's, this is what we think. I want to see steps come in with money attached financially, because we have to sell it to the town. And the town's not all that happy right now because of this 19,700 square foot. And all rumors are flying as only Nahant can. We have to be able to sell it, and we have to be able to justify spending that money.
And I agree with you 1,000%.
Understood.
Which is why I'm looking to take this report and pick it apart into the needs of the community.
And second, I'm absolutely thrilled that you're taking it inside, that these guys, all you guys are going to work on this and come up with. My only request is that, okay, we need this, we think it's going to be about $2 million, $3 million, whatever. Okay, go, go get someone to tell you exactly how much, you know, that type of thing. That we can sell, and that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you, and that's exactly what I'm looking for.
For you to open up by saying that, I said, this is terrific, that's what I'd be looking for. I, I'm overwhelmed with the consultants, you know, I am. I know you can do it, I know these guys can do it. I know you can. This is well done. I read it two or three times until I got to the alternative sites. I tried to use my coffee to stop my fire out in my backyard, but I couldn't. Good job. It's telling me we need something. And I agree with you, to fix it, you run into so many things. You run into so many things. Maybe it's better to redo it, but we need to see that. And it will cost this. Please.
See, and this is very important dialogue, because as this committee goes forward, and does Phase Two, the first half of Phase Two, they need to understand your concerns. And with that, then they can come back and actually address each of those with the information. And I will applaud Mike and the others that participated in it so far. They've done site visits already and taken a look at other sites, other projects, other costs, et cetera, so...
I would, I would look at the original site, the site that it's on. It's less expensive, it's less invasive to the school, to the neighborhood. I don't suggest moving the fire station. I don't see why we have to. It's never flooded, it's never, even in '78, it didn't flood. I don't see it being a problem. And cost savings-wise, we have 3,500 people here. I mean, and like T said, how do we sell that to people? I mean, how do you sell something like that to a town of 3,500 people? It's just a lot of money, you know? And the public, the whole public safety aspect of it was, and this, again, this got out, I think it just went a little overboard because it started out as a grant that Austin had put in for to look at the fire station. And it turned out to be this. And, you know, I think you guys did a great job, I think you worked hard, and I know you're all volunteers. I don't think Dor and Whittier did a great, that great of a job, to be quite honest with you. They could have done a better job. I asked them questions, they couldn't answer them. And I'm not a builder, I'm not an architect. So I just don't want to hire another consultant to find out we're going to be, you know, back at square one.
And that's certainly not our intent.
No, I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
Let me assure you of that.
Could I suggest something, Enzo?
Sure.
Trying to renovate the existing facility while it's in use...
Yeah.
Will cost you much more than trying to build new. Because you have to accommodate all of the phasing and all of the temporary power and all of the temporary water and everything else, which is a sunk cost. Because you don't get that back. Once you're in the permanent, all that gets ripped out again. And this is why renovations are so expensive, trying to accommodate an industrial use in place. So I would advocate, if you're going to do it, if there is space behind the existing station where you could install a new station of any size, whatever is the appropriate size, and then rip down what's in front. Because I don't think you have much of a chance of bringing in a renovation of the existing structure, particularly with new wiring, everything else new, code, all of the detectors have to be in place, all of that instrumentation and the like, as opposed to building random. One point. Second point, you don't have a lot of time. And I say that because you've got two competing infrastructure programs percolating in Washington at this moment. One for $500 billion, another for a trillion. One or more of them are halfway. Somebody is going to adopt. And they don't have projects enough to use that money. And if you're far enough down the road, you've got all your public participation in place, you've got the support of the Selectmen, you've got what you need, you can be, if not first in line, early.
So you're looking, you're talking about a grant?
I'm talking about, not a grant. They're going to be around scratching for plans. Because they just put out a big highway and bridge program two years ago. They didn't have a lot on the shelf then, and there was nothing on the shelf anywhere else. So this is Nahant's chance to go through what is the capital inventory, decide what you need, the simplest design element possible. If you need to relay water mains, relay sewers, anything that has high manpower, low design content, think about it, put it together. This is a perfect project. And I know some people will not want to hear this again. If you could buy a package building that met your needs, that could be put up on a foundation in a minute and a half, it'd be probably best. But since they're looking for labor, doing a block wall, I think, will be a good thing for you guys to do. But it really does say, you've got to proceed, as you watch what's going on in Washington, as if this thing is going into the ground in the next six months. Because what I think they will do, based on what happened in the stimulus, is insist on early start projects getting preference, which is what we did back in '78 and '79. Some may be old enough to remember some of that stuff. But in fact, they were looking for ready-to-go projects, really ready-to-go, low design, high labor content jobs. You had to be in the ground in 90 days. Construction had to start 90 days. I would not be surprised to see them do that this time, because everybody was so angry with what happened last night. So again, this is going to put a burden on the Selectmen, but I think it could be useful for the town.
And I can tell you that back in 2009, I think it was, a similar type program, they had come out with a fire station construction grant program, similar to the Fire Act grants that Austin's been so successful with. But the only projects that they would even look at funding had to be shovel-ready, without funding.
Had to be what?
Shovel-ready, ready to initiate construction. They just didn't have the funding to do it. And they awarded 100 of those around the country.
I would go, I mean, I think you could, you could probably move the building over into the parking lot, and then tear the other building down once it's done. But to move it into the school property, no. I just don't, I don't agree with that. I think it's, you could move it right next to the DPW building. In that area, there's plenty of room, and then tear the other building down.
And what we would do in this phase is look at all those different options. The existing site, the parking lot next door, behind the DPW, replacing the DPW and moving the DPW behind, the school site, looking at all the different sites and all the different options, and what would be involved.
The school site ain't going to make it. I'm telling you right now.
And I don't disagree with you, but we have to do our due diligence and look at them all.
That due diligence was here, it's gone. I'm telling you that right now. If that comes up, you won't get any fire station. The people will be up in arms. I've heard it and heard it.
And Frank brings up a good point about what if we run into grants or funding that is, has immediacy to it.
If the government wants to buy us a new fire station, knock yourself out. I have no problem. Austin, did you want to...
Yeah, I'd just like to, my biggest concern with this is the timeframe. And I'm concerned about pushing it off another year, doing another study, because the immediate need is we have two fire trucks, and this town is relying on a 36-year-old fire engine that isn't safe. You can't get parts for it, and that has to be replaced, and the new replacement will not fit in the current building. So pushing this off another year to do, redo an assessment, and then looking for design money that year, you know, a year from this town meeting, that's two years off before you're even looking for funding to build a station. And on top of that, you have to spend $500,000 for a new fire engine, which takes eight months to build. And that needs to happen immediately. When, of our two fire engines, one of which is now 14 years old, it was purchased with a grant, and it breaks down frequently, it doesn't pump properly. It has been out several times for repairs. We went on mutual aid about two weeks ago, and the check engine light was coming on just driving over to the other community. Whenever that goes out, that 36-year-old engine is this town's only fire protection. And that should not be acceptable. It's, you shouldn't have firefighters going into a building relying on an antique that you can't get parts for anymore. There's a reason why people don't drive around 30-year-old vehicles. They're not safe.
Well, speaking for myself, when that engine was five years old, it broke down.
The newer engine?
The new engine. It broke down in front of the real estate office there in Nahant. And we had it towed back to the Fire Department. And I put a computer in it. I put a computer in it, and I had to program it. And it was expensive, and I just could not believe the, what you're depending on. It's, you depended on this little computer that was just hanging by wire ties under the dashboard. And it burnt up. It just, it cooked, and it just shut the whole engine down. So I think you're on the right track. That would be a good backup engine to put in the back, but that's not going to fit back there.
Yeah.
So what I would, I would ask the committee to look at making, possibly extending the back, the back of the building, for now, making it bigger. I mean, just making it bigger so you can accommodate that. And then perhaps doing all the, I mean, you say ADA compliant, so that means an ADA bathroom... Clearances.
Always.
Okay. You don't need a wheelchair ramp, because it's, it's on the ground.
There is a step up.
Yeah.
All right, there's a step up, but you can, you can certainly make a ramp.
You can grade it, yeah.
Right. I don't think that's a big deal. I think you should probably look at both. Moving it, and then just adding to the back of the building where you can put, you know, it's a cement block building.
And we will. We're going to look at all the different options, and come back to you with the report on all the different options and what we can put together for a projected cost for each of those options.
And Chief, too, Austin's, it seems to me you'd have to look at short and long term, and try to look at all the options needed if you were to go a little longer, that Austin's points are very valid, that there must be something we can do to better accommodate for the period of time in development stage, the needs, I would think.
As far as if we were to get a new engine in the meantime? Yeah. We would have to look at a temporary fix to achieve that.
Can you rent a sprung structure?
That, I would...
You know?
As long as it's heated.
You can get them heated, you can get them, whatever you want for them. But a sprung structure, I would think, sitting right adjacent to that, in that area in the back, would give you exactly what you want.
And that would certainly be a temporary option.
Yeah, it's a purely temporary option, but...
Yeah.
There are people...
But not an inexpensive one either.
But you've got space that is weather-protected, heated, available to you.
Yes.
Anybody trying to work on the engine can work inside, not outside.
And also, it's not inexpensive to order quints that are designed to fit into different spaces, rather than trying to buy something that's a little more standard.
Right, if I can, the quint refers specifically to an aerial truck that also has a pump incorporated. We have a 2013 quint. So there's going to be no need to replace that foreseeably for the next 17 years. A new engine, a new pumper, on the other hand, is going to be needed sooner rather than later, and then again, probably in about seven years. Six or seven years to replace our current frontline piece. Based on normal expected use, what we see in the ability to repair the equipment, obtaining the parts for outdated apparatus, antique apparatus, as Austin referred to it, Engine 32 was out of service for four weeks for brakes.
They couldn't get this brake rotors, I know.
They couldn't get brake rotors for that truck because it's so old. And we can't allow ourselves to be caught in that position again.
How old were the old Max that we had, before, before we got the new, new engine?
79s.
Because that was after the Blizzard '78. Now, those are trucks that lasted. In Nahant, I mean, I think if, if it was bought properly last time, which I don't think it was, I think it would have lasted, I think they'll last 20, 20 years.
Right, and that's what I'm giving it, 20 years.
Not seven years. I would say 20 years, because they don't, we don't put that many miles on it.
That's what he's saying.
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
It's 13, 14 years old now, so it's good for another six or seven years. That's absolutely 20 years.
Okay. And even longer. I mean, those, those trucks, they're probably still running.
They don't make those anymore.
Right, they don't make them anymore, that's the problem.
And they were, I used to work on them, they're great. And they were, I used to work on them. They're great. I mean, they were well-built. The pumps work beautifully. And it's too bad we got rid of them.
Just talking about custom-built fire engines, you can get low-profile fire engines, but it's not just a height restriction on that rear bay. It's only nine feet, ten inches wide. Any standard truck, when you include the mirrors on the side, is going to be at least ten and a half feet wide. They're also longer than that bay is. So there's nothing about the dimensions of that bay that would fit any new engine that would meet our needs.
Well, like T said, I'd like to see a cost analysis of just adding to the back of the building and, you know, making it compliant, and then ripping it down and putting up another building. I mean, we need to see all that. What do you suspect it's going to cost for another, somebody else to come in and assess it, Chief?
To assess this Phase Two? We're going to do that work.
No, I know that. You said you wanted to have a, somebody come in and
Just to take the work that this committee has done in Phase Two and put it together in a package.
Yeah.
So that moving on to the next phase for whatever direction it goes, it's a presentable and understandable format for somebody to bid on the design phase.
Would you have any estimate, what do you think that would cost?
I had requested ten thousand dollars based on what was spent on this. But again, we're doing all the legwork, so it would likely come in under that. All we're looking
We wouldn't know till it got to that point.
Right. We'd have to solicit several companies to give us quotation.
So we can take another advisement, I suppose, and then have you come back to us and let us know what that would cost, I guess. And then we can go from there.
So you've called out several elements that you'd like them to take a look at, one of the cost analysis for adding something to the existing building and then making it compliant. Can, I guess we're looking for authorization to move forward with analysis of all these elements?
I could have sworn we already accepted Phase One of this, and we talked about it.
No. We met, we talked about it, and it was tabled.
It was tabled. It was tabled. You're right. Okay.
I saw that.
I'll entertain a motion that we move ahead with, you know, move from Phase One to Phase Two.
So move.
And I'll second, I'll second it. The discussion?
Discussion, just one more time. I think it's great you guys are doing this. It would resonate through the town, you know, that you guys, I know you did, you probably did most of this anyway by them asking you questions. But this, this way, it's done by you. You're going to come back with estimates attached. I think, I think it will really work well. I do.
We're going to talk to the firemen, right? The firemen will have some input.
Absolutely.
The guys, yeah. Yeah, I think, I think you guys did a good job. I really do. I was a little disappointed with Doran Whittier, though. I have to say that. But I think the guys that did this assessment, you know, the committee, the volunteerism, they did a great job. It was a very detailed report. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
It should be noted that we have quite a range of expertise on this committee. And so I think the committee will be, you know, do a great job in moving this forward.
Okay.
Is there anything else that anybody would like to discuss tonight?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, T?
Please, I'll move.
Okay, I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
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 We are going into executive session.
Thank you, gentlemen. The pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, Pedro, we're done.